We're going to call this meeting, the Town Meeting Reimagined, to order. And it is 6:10 or 11:00 actually. And we really want to thank everyone here in person and on Zoom for coming out to the very first Town Meeting Reimagined. And being the first one, we do, and we already ask for your patience if there are glitches. This has been a learning curve for both the staff and the Town Meeting Reimagined.
Recording in progress.
We all want to make this town meeting a success. The TMRI task force has benefited from a strong core group with additional members joining the process moving forward. The core group researched, created a report for the select board, put together the kickoff meeting in October, and now this Town Meeting Reimagined. We all should thank those core members for all the time and energy that they have put into making tonight happen. The meeting will begin shortly. Can I move you up to the stand or just shall I read the names?
Evilish.
All right. It's Angelique Condes, S.J. Dubey, Beth Esmond, Sam Grollty, Jennifer Nowor, Sabina Erst, Catherine Paris, Maria Rinaldi, Libby Strong, and Teresa Willman. And although the co-chairs wanted to make sure the core members were recognized, the board also wants to recognize the co-chairs, Gay Simington and Dave Barrington, because for their coordinated effort to keep the process organized and moving forward, they provided the strength and organization that the core needed. The board also wants to thank the town staff itself, which provided help as needed to the task force in their efforts to make sure the budget was correct and ready for this evening, especially Amy Moore, Suppos Paula Carrier, and Brian Stevens. And what's going to happen now is Peter's going to say a few words about the process, and followed by Eric, who will talk about the main drivers of the increase in the budget. And then we're going to turn the meeting over to Dave Barrington, and he's going to be running as a town meeting and a budget.
So my name is Peter Booth, and I am just going to sort of, oop, let them tell that we're going to run in here, just as Town Meeting runs, so Dave will run the meeting, and people will be able to stand up and get attention and ask questions and make motions and the such. And for folks online, we've got a system set up where you have different ways that you can flag Maria Rinaldi online, and then she will get the attention of either Sabina or Paula Carrier here in the room, who will then get the attention of Dave Barrington, and you'll be recognized at that point. I think people online, I'm not sure if people online are aware, but just so you know, you're not visible to the audience here until your request to speak. So you don't need to be self-conscious about what your living room looks like in the background right now unless you're going to talk to the group.
Take a wave.
Hi, everyone. My name's Eric Johnson. I'm on the select board. And a couple of things I want to talk about. So as Catherine said, we're really excited that we found a way, we're trying to find a way to keep that tradition of Town Meeting and also honor the vote that happened on the floor. Last year, a Town Meeting was moving to Australia ballot. One thing that I'm going to personally consider a successful TMRI is if the budget passes on the traditional month Town Meeting Day. And so the budget that we're presenting to you tonight has a pretty substantial increase of what we had last year. And so I wanted to talk through that a little bit. We'll go through in detail, but if you can go to the pie chart. So if you remember, last year, we asked the voters to approve a bond vote for the new maintenance facility for the Town Garage. And this budget includes the first payment of that bond facility. And that makes up 51% of the increase, around $303,000. And then the other things are represented up here. Road improvements. So we made a conscious choice last year to remove $195,000 from the road improvement funds for two reasons. One, we knew that the education tax was going to be substantial on your tax bill last year. And we had, we were down quite a bit in road maintenance staff and didn't feel that we were in a great position to tackle some of the big projects. That needs to get that added back this year. So that makes up 33%. And then there's some net outlay for grant activity, which is some bridge work that we have coming up. So there's a big bridge replacement that's coming up this summer on Brownest Trace. We call it Bridge 15. It's the one down by Fitzsimmons, kind of near the Town Garage. That's getting replaced. We have a 5% copay, whatever you want to call it, for the grant for doing that replacement. And then there's a couple other matching funds that we have to put in for some of the grants that we're expecting for an old pump bridge. And then there's one other, there's one other thing that is the biggest part of the budget driving, budget increase driving. Like I said, we'll go into that in full detail later, but we're already coming in, we're coming in happy, so. Dave?
They're looking at me. All right, good people. This is the Town Meeting you used to have. It has been warped into the future. At your request, at the voters' request, that we include as many people as possible by going to as much access as possible, which is why I want to welcome the folks online and to the folks in the room. And we've worked real hard to try to integrate the two groups so that we can have a meeting of the whole, having both at the same time. You have heard in various ways that the select board is very receptive to what you have to offer tonight in a way of changes to the town budget. You've heard it directly from them, and you've heard it from us on the Town Meeting Reimagined Task Force. And it's important, it's been important for us right along to make sure that you understood that coming here tonight was a critical part of this whole thing working. And I appreciate the great turnout that we've got tonight to start off this new process. So that's great. As I'm fond of saying, this is the last refuge of direct democracy. And we can continue that tradition and make it more accessible in a couple of ways. Remember that the other way we're going to do it is by having the ballot, having the vote on the whole budget on Town Meeting Day, the Australian ballot. And what we're doing tonight is attending to the details by looking at the key lines on the budget that you find important to talk about and see what there is that you want to do to impact the select board's decision about their final budget. That's what we're about this evening. So that means that whether you're online or in the room, your participation is important. I have some folks that just showed up for the first time, but there's a lot of familiar faces here. I'll just remind you that this is your meeting, so speak up. If you've got a question, ask a question. And if you have a motion to amend the budget as presented to a different number for any line in the budget that comes up, or one that you noted that hasn't come up, that's fair ground for your speaking up this evening. There's a change in how we do things because of integrated online and in-the-room business. It is important that everybody realizes that they need to show their hand to be recognized to speak. And in the room, we've got, we've added microphones. You'll see, you've overcome the microphone problem. We've got two mics running around. You've got Nate running around here somewhere from the Cub Scouts. And we have another mic runner as well, and I've already forgotten who we got on that one. Is it Ben?
No, Ben's in the studio.
Omar.
Omar, that was it.
Omar, I thought they took it away.
Anyway, we'll figure that one out. And then online, people, you've got Maria, who is your friend to connect you to me in the room. And so in order to be recognized, Maria's going to communicate your interest in speaking to us in the room. And we'll begin by working directly. Maria actually telling me that there's somebody online who would like to speak, and then I'll recognize you, and you can go ahead. I remind you of the basic rules, people. If you want to speak, the first thing out of your mouth is your name. Doesn't matter how many times you speak, the first thing you say is your name. And it's not just for us, it's for the board player who's going to write the notes up for the meeting, okay? So your first thing to say is your name. I'll give you a minute to say what you have in mind, and if you need more than a minute, you're going to ask permission. And two minutes is it. And if you're speaking on a motion, I'm only going to let you speak a couple times, and then you're done for that motion. So we've got to move through this, and I've got to shut up so we get on it. But that's the way that's going to work. When we get into voting, I'll let you know about that. That's a whole different bag of cats. And it's going to be different because we've got to vote online and in person at more or less the same time. All right, I believe we're good. And I'm going to say that as moderator, I'm going to call this meeting to order in terms of officially opening the meeting to the public to have the select board present their budget to you. And I'm going to say, I'm going to do something a little strange just to kind of see where we're at here. Is there a motion for you to hear the select board draft budget with the intent of suggesting changes to that budget? And who would that be that made that motion?
Brian Calhoun.
Brian Calhoun. And is there a second to that motion?
Second. Bill, get back.
Thank you very much. Now may I invite the select board to proceed?
My, thank you. Thank you. I'm supposed to talk closer to it so that online can hear.
As close as you can stand.
Dear, simply nose. There, oh, good. Excellent. Still bothers me, okay. Anyway, I get to start with the revenue aspect, and then I'll move to the capital budget, and then the rest of the budget will be split among the members on the select board. But starting with general tax revenue, Eric has already talked about the main drivers of the 19.78% increase. And we worked very, very hard to get it down from the original 20, almost 24%. The numbers just are too scary, but more than half of that is a component, is the bond. And when you think about it, our number is increasing the budget by $589,412. $303,195 of that is the bond vote, so the actual operating budget really is not increasing as much as it may look like. And these are property taxes, suggested property taxes. We won't note for sure until the grand list is satisfied in April. But this is strictly for the town. It does not include the school budget, which is a separate thing. And also on the ballot, you know, or your tax bill, you're going to see the UJFD budget, which is a separate item on your tax bill. And the Deborah Rawson Library is a separate item on your tax bill, as well as the recent reserve funds for the old mill and the open space fund or conservation fund. But to move this quickly, unless there are questions, there's no budgeted changes for penalties and interest. Intergovernmental is essentially the same, except for a little discount. And what you do not see here are the large grants or the bond dollars because, as revenue, because we have chosen to put the revenue and expenses together in a separate section for these major capital items so that it's clearer as to where you're spending and where you have the revenue, and it's together as opposed to multiple sheets of paper apart. And hopefully, we've done that for the last couple of years, and it's made it easier for people to understand those major costs. Licenses and fees, we did not change anything. Miscellaneous interest and checking went up because we had the ARPA funding for a while, and that did gain some interest, but it's not, but we won't be seeing those kinds of numbers in the future because ARPA has been spent. So total revenues, we're anticipating $44,51,911. And I'll move to the capital budget, which you should have a copy of or have looked at. And of course, the biggest project to start with for fiscal year '26 is the building of property, our new maintenance facility of $4,645,792. And that is covered by a source of funding, which is the bond proceeds of $4,145,792, and from our building improvement fund, which is ARPA-funded.
Jump in real quick. First of all, people have copied the capital budget in the room? Okay, God, you have to answer. Thanks, Sabina, for the question.
I think we also want to pause till we get the capital budget up on the screen.
Oh, okay. Sorry. That's a good idea. Forget we have to attend to that now. Sorry.
You can't see, so it's our job, so you can blame us. Here we go.
Oh, good. Okay, so I'll start over so that people can understand. The first big project in the capital budget is, as you see, the new maintenance facility, And that's balanced by the bond proceeds of $4,145,792, and a transfer of the building fund into which we put $500,000 of ARPA funding to make it dedicated so we could use the money to help offset some of the cost of the bond. Next is another new initiative, and it's called the wastewater initiative. And that is for $100,000, and it's going to be using $100,000 from the general fund, which means there is no tax implication for this at the moment. And it's going to be used to move forward with DeBois and King and to start the process for preliminary engineering for wastewater in the Riverside area. And it's also going to be used for consulting with the Regional Planning Commission, who will provide a project management plan, as well as a project manager. And it's going to establish a governance mechanism, a wastewater committee, it's going to research funding opportunities, and, you know, figure out how we can actually move this project forward. So moving on then, we see the highways. We brought back our $295,000 that Eric talked about, because last year was $100,000. We added the $195 back. Bridges and culverts. The bridge is going to cost $2384,500. And again, we're going to have a 5% match of that. The old pump road bridge repair, turned out the bridge, we were going to pave the aprons going into the old pump bridge, but the actual base of the, I guess they call it, what is that? Some of the people, the laymen underneath the bridge surface needs to be replaced, so we'll have to do work on that bridge before we even do the paving of the aprons. Heavy equipment vehicles. We're going to buy a heavy-duty pickup with a sander and a plow for $112,714, and a backhoe for $143,900. This is a lieu of a new tandem truck. It's almost a similar cost, but the larger pickup truck will allow the town staff to be able to do cul-de-sacs in smaller roads easier as opposed to the larger tandem with the plow.
Just to clarify your point, when she said similar cost, she means the two combined things are similar cost to one of the big tandems?
Yes. As opposed to the tandem.
Yep.
Yeah. And it's, and so, and then the $30,000 for the other equipment is the loan payment on another piece of equipment that broke, and we had to purchase a fiscal year '25, a loader. Sidewalks, we're going to start construction in fiscal year '26 of the Riverside sidewalk. That's for $750,000. And again, the grant for that is, there is a grant for that, and we have a 20% match on that one. And there is also, the MMU is going to, PATH is going to start some cost in there, so it's about $50,000, which will also be covered by operating. So in the end, to be raised by taxes, it's $325,000. But the total funding, if you count the full grant and the full bond, is $861,906. And so we now move on to Eric, who will start the expenditures.
Okay, so I'm going to try to talk in generalized, in sections, and if people need to talk about a line, well, you know how to get Dave's attention. So for the first section, Town Treasurer, the main increase here is benefits. I'll just say across the board, the cost of the town to provide health insurance benefits has gone up for all towns, certainly for Jericho. That's really the only change in Treasurer. Moving to Administrator and Select Board, that section, it's a little confusing here, so you'll see that the salary is up from what we budgeted last year. And then just for the sake of conversation, not to try to confuse you, but to skip down to the Town Clerk, you'll see that that one went down a little bit. What we're doing, what we're planning on this year is to, there is a part-time staff that is currently assisting the Town Clerk. And we're going to have that staff mostly assist the Administrator and Select Board. So we just moved that line item to where it made a little more sense. So that's why you see some of the change there. The change in benefits, again, there's a couple of things that drive that. One is the overall cost increase, and then the other is just as staff changes, different staff has different, you know, they will have different plans, which have different costs to the town, basically, whether it's, you know, a single or a family or a couple or whatever. Those have different costs, so you'll see some of those changing. That really makes up the bulk of the change for the Administrator and Select Board section.
Question? Yeah, all right. Let's find a mic, just a minute. Let's find a mic. Read, read. In the back, in the back. Thank you, Nick.
Joe Flynn. Is it on?
I think you've got to press it and hold it till the green light comes on, I believe. Someone said that earlier.
There we go. Joe Flynn, Route 15, Jericho. Actually, in regards to this, I appreciate the presentation. I have a motion I'd like to put forth.
Which line are we giving a relaunch?
This will be 106 in salaries under Administration and Select Board.
Very good.
Really, really quick, I will ask for two minutes on this, but really quick synopsis. What I'm requesting is a change in the stipulation, stipulated amount, Select Board members are compensated for their service in the town of Jericho. It hasn't been changed in a very long time. It is quite low.
Can you hold the mic right after you mount, sorry?
It is. The amount is quite low and nowhere near what our, basically, our sister town of Underhill is right now. I did have the pleasure and displeasure of serving on the Select Board for a couple months, and I know firsthand the amount of commitment that they have to put forward to running this community. So I'm putting a motion to increase the stipend for the Select Board members to 5,000. Right now, it's about 1,800.
Is that per?
Pardon?
Is that per?
Yeah.
Per member.
So what is the total increase that you're suggesting?
I believe it would be, under salaries, an allocation of, I don't know what the direct increase, but 15,000 for compensation, for compensation for our Select Board members.
So you're actually suggesting that the budget be increased by $9,400, if I've got the math right?
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six, I believe.
I will trust your math, yes.
And that $1,800 number is a little rough. It goes down to pennies. I'm not sure how it's calculated, but it won't be exactly that number, but it's right around 1,800 currently.
All right, and we will need a second to this. And who's giving the second?
Bill Butler.
Thank you, Bill. All right, I'm, Bill Butler was second to that.
I have a question to the motion.
You're going to have to use a microphone. Yeah? Just to be clear, folks, the biggest reason for the microphones is because people on Zoom can only hear you when you're talking right into a mic.
Amy Capitan, just a question to the motion. I know there's been a lot of talk about increasing the Select Board to five members. Should we do a budget considering five members instead of three? That's just, I guess, back to you and your motive.
I can answer that easily. There are only three members right now. And there is an active petition, is gathering signatures for five, but that is just an active petition right now. Other questions or comments? Yep, let me get you a microphone. I need two runners, please. Yeah, Beth, would you take the second?
Where's the other mic?
It's next to the mic. He's going to get that.
We have two mics. Let's use them.
Peter Anderson. I just want to understand the process here. If we vote on this amendment, is that a binding vote or an advisory vote? Vote to the Select Board, and the Select Board then considers whether they want to give themselves a raise or not?
So that's, okay, let me answer your question first of all. So the precise situation we are in is that in this meeting, you are giving advice to the Select Board as to the draft budget. And they have made a commitment to abide by your suggestions, except in situations where they find it unmanageable to do so. I'll let them use the exact words at some point, but that is exactly what's going on. And so the answer to your question is yes, you're actually giving the Select Board as a body advice about their salary, and they have set the budget for their salary, and you're advising them to increase it.
So just, Peter, just to fill in on that, Peter, I would, if this motion were to get a second and pass, I would not, I would view that as a done deal, that people change their budget that way, and that's the new budget number. I wouldn't be like, ooh, I feel weird giving myself a raise, like this, this group made the decision to add that amount of money. That is not something that's going to throw the town off the rails financially, so that's how the budget would get changed.
We have a question from online, from Gay.
Yeah?
Well, my question, this is Gay Simington. My question, Joe, you referenced Underhill. What is, what does Underhill pay as a stipend?
I actually contacted Underhill yesterday. They do pay 5,000 a year in stipend. I have that, I confirm that from Underhill.
Other questions or comments? Online, folks, you're welcome to indicate to Maria and come on and speak. We have somebody in the room? Yep?
Elizabeth Bernstein. Just to dovetail on the question, I believe that what we decide tonight will be on the Australian ballot, and then on Town Meeting Day, the town members should the town members who vote will either vote the budget up or down. So they don't automatically get, they would not automatically get a raise. My question is, approximately, one, how many meetings do you have a year? And two, approximately, how many hours a week? And you can answer it either way, or both ways. How many hours a week do you think you put into town business?
It varies, I mean, a lot, to be perfectly honest. I mean, it's a big lift, to be really blunt. I mean, our meetings are routinely 6:30 to 10:00, so, and that's twice, that's three and a half hours, twice a month. And there's, and there's a lot, I mean, there's a lot of work that happened that each of us do individually, in preparation for meetings, before and after following up on things, come out of the meeting and then, before the next meeting, and then working with Paula Carrier and the town staff, so it's a lot of time, being perfectly honest.
And then there are special meetings, you're gonna have to do.
Question here. All right, where are we? Jim Adams? Am I on?
Yep, go ahead.
All right. $1,800 is... Oh, yeah, wait in the name, please. But James Adams.
Oh, you did say it.
I did say it, yep. I couldn't agree more with it. $5,000 is, is a nice, let's say, token. Doesn't anywhere near cover the amount of work that they do. So for us to pay them 1,800 is an embarrassment to the town and to them. So I would encourage us to vote for that. Other, yep?
Maeve McBride. I'm just wondering if it would be possible, it looks like each of the segments' salaries are just lumped, so we don't really have a sense of how many staff people that is. I'm wondering if, just for clarity, if you could add, like, FTEs potentially to that description?
I'm sorry, it doesn't seem to relate to the Select Board.
Oh, well, in particular, I would love to see the line 106 divided between the Administrator and the Select Board members, if possible, so we could actually see what the Select Board gets compared to what the Administrator gets in salary.
I heard a comment off a mic, I don't know what to do with it, is it helpful? Do you want, is this Select Board?
The comment was, it's that balance minus $5,400, which is what the three of us get. So the rest, they take 5,000 away from that, 204,000, that's what remains for staff, I believe. Yeah, and I think her point was, was to see a breakdown, you know, that 204 is not just the Select Board's salary and the Town Administrator. That includes the Assistant Town Administrator. I guess I'm not... And Megan, the Assistant, that I mentioned. Is that, that qualifies into that line? But I understand what you're asking for is to see that separate, especially for this particular motion, which I don't really want to comment on.
Okay, let's move right along here. Are there other people that want to speak to the motion to increase salary, or whatever, stipend for the Select Board to 5,000 from 1,800? Being a total increase of $9,600, I believe. Seeing none in the room, is there, Maria, do we have anybody interested in speaking online?
I don't see any hands currently.
Very good, I'm gonna close the, I'm gonna move to voting. So now, there's our main voyage with voting, folks. So we're gonna count votes both online and in the room, we have counters both places. Okay, if you're in the room, you're not gonna say aye, you're gonna raise your hand, because we're counting everybody by hand, okay? And online, it's the same way, you're gonna, and you've got a choice. You have two kinds of hands. You have real hands and you have the Zoom hand, and you can use either one. The online, our online counters are highly trained professionals. So this, we're gonna start with a majority. So the first thing that we're gonna do, just so you understand how I'm gonna do this, you will remember that ordinarily what we do is have a majority, and I make an assessment. We're gonna try that by the hands, okay? So I'll do the assessment in the room of hands, in terms of majority, and Maria will report out what the sense is of people online. You with me?
So to be clear, we're not gonna count votes individually right now?
We're not gonna, yeah, there's two, there's two phases. There's a majority phase, and then there's a count phase. Anybody can ask for a count at any time, that's right in Robert's Rules of Order. I encourage you to just let this majority think, let's try it out. So Maria, are you guys ready out there to do that? I can't hear you.
Sorry about that, I was muted. Looks like we have a couple of questions online. See a thumbs up and a thumbs down reaction. Should be a raised hand, if you click the react button, looks like a heart at the bottom, and there should be something that says raised hand. If that doesn't work, just turn on your video and raise your hand. All right, call the question, Dave.
We have called the question, and we're gonna move into voting. So all those in favor, please raise your hands. All right, thank you. In the room, you may put down your hands. Maria, just let me know what, how it comes out in online for your group.
All right, we've got about 26 people, I'd say, here, 20, 30 people that are in agreement out of 52.
We got the count right away. Okay, my sense is that this motion passes. Gathering what Maria said and added with my sense of the room, I'm gonna say that the motion is passed. So we will, the amendment, again, is to increase the stipend for Select Board to $5,000 each, from $1,800 each, for an increase to the town budget of $9,600. Wow, there we go. We did our first motion.
Thank you, online, folks.
All right, let's continue.
Okay, so that takes us, I didn't have anything else to talk about under Administrator and Select Board. Moving down to Town Clerk, again, I kinda talked about that, how you're gonna see a change in salary there, that's because of... Louis, is my voice?
Okay.
Is this mic still on? Yeah. So moving that part-time staffer to have her spend most of her time supporting the Administrator and Select Board. I didn't have any other notes for that. Still showing listing? Listing up on the screen? Listing, mostly unchanged, you'll see the salary goes up by around $10,000 there. Because we're doing a reassessment this year, we have a part-time staff in the Lister's office that will be increasing hours to support that reassessment. Health Office, largely unchanged. Planning and zoning, again, the change here is in the benefits, really no other change. In fact, the total really isn't, doesn't change much. We reduced our projected legal expense, I think, I think mostly based on what the previous numbers had been. So we brought that down a little bit, so really not much of a change in the overall for planning and zoning. Highways and bridges, Catherine talked about that a little bit. One thing you'll notice, and we got a great question in email this week, you'll notice the salary line drops in that, on line 151. That really just aligns with how much we have had staffed. So if you look back through at the actuals, you'll see that the lowering down to 370 is a little bit closer than what we've had. And so what we've done in the past is we've budgeted for six full-time highway crew, and we rarely have actually had a full staff. So we were trying to be as accurate as we could. So what we did is we are, we're budgeting for five full-time staff and then a part-time highway person. And again, that's partially because of what we think we need, and it's also partially just because, you know, last year we maybe had four, there was a time we might have even had three for a little bit. We have had six for a very brief time, so we're just trying to project what we feel is accurate. Again, though, if you look at benefits, the next line, you'll see that that goes up quite a bit, and that, again, that the change in, the increase in the cost to the town, the health insurance, as well as, you know, different staff having different benefit needs, is really the big, the big thing there. And then, of course, the line 165 is, we're adding that $195,000 back that I mentioned. This is just, we have a great staff now, we were ready to tackle some projects, and we needed to increase that back, that was really a one-time reduction that we did last year, help you out your tax bills just a little bit.
Bill Newbeck.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your name.
Newbeck. So last year at Town Meeting, I made what I guess was the last successful amendment to the budget, asking that $5,000 be added to revise the town's road specs.
I believe it was 500.
Okay. Either way, I have not heard anything about that. Is that still in the budget, is it a carryover?
Our Town Administrator is telling me it is still in the budget.
Okay, thank you.
James Adams. You talked about the salaries in older time in the Highway Department, that you perhaps are understaffed. Is that a comfortable position, or are we not paying a high enough wage to have a full staff?
I think that's a good question. I do think we've, perhaps, cost was, could have been a reason why we were having a hard time filling vacancies. I think we have a really strong crew right now. We have a fairly new foreman, who's doing a great job, we have a pretty strong crew. As for how fair we are compared to other towns or other similar roles, I haven't personally done into that a lot. I do think that they're fairly compensated, but I might need to ask them that question, I don't know.
Hello, actually, pardon? It's, there's not enough drivers with CDL willing to work the hours that a road crew member has to in the winter to get up and plow and stuff like that. That's a biggie, because what happens, particularly in Chittenden County, is towns steal road crew from other towns, and then they steal from another town, and it's a cycle that goes all the way around. But we try to maintain our pay scale to be similar with others, and we have very good benefits that has, but young people coming in early, you know, benefits aren't that big a deal. It's the money that they can get disturbed with.
Did that mostly answer your question, sir?
Yes, my take is we ought to be aware of the going forward.
Thank you.
Brian Cowan. I had a question about the new building, is this an okay time to bring that up?
Sure. Right away.
So this is a four and a half million dollar building, and there's a bond, and so we, as taxpayers, are we paying that bond back over some period of time?
Yes.
What period of time?
30 years?
It's a 30-year bond.
And where will we see that on the budget?
That is in the capital budget, you saw the bond, there's a bond, it was the maintenance facility, the loan, the bond and the bond payment. And then towards the end of the presentation, that's where we see the accounting for the revenue and the expenses for each of these, those particular items.
So we won't see it in this part?
You'll see it in a different section, but you will see it.
You'll see it under debt service, because it's a loan, we're borrowing four and a half million dollars and paying a little bit, it's like your mortgage, every year a little bit, so that'll get our debt services, where that'll pop up in this actual budget for this year.
And the Select Board is convinced that Jericho needs a four and a half million dollar?
So that went absentee last year, I mean, the Select Board is convinced of that, but that was a bond vote, voted for and passed by voters last year. At this point, it's, I would say the whole town has spoken on that.
Victoria Tibbetts. Another question, if I could back up to line 146, planning and zoning, which says three railroad circle expense?
Ooh, I just caught that, that should say two.
Thank you, that answers my question.
I'm sorry.
That ties back then to line 122, which is two railroad circle.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. No, I apologize for that. That is accurate. It is, it is accurate for line three. You'll see that it is empty, it's just because, I guess I'm not sure in accounting how long you continue to show a line that you're no longer spending against. There was some work that had to be done as a result of some planning and zoning that was, that was done on three railroad circle, which is a different property than two railroad circle.
Okay, thank you, so those are two distinctly different properties, and so the activity will be happening, the $1,500 is on two railroad circle in the future.
That's further down, yeah. Yep.
All right, thank you.
The only other thing I had to call out in highways and bridges is that we did reduce the diesel, the gas and diesel costs. We had $85,000 last year, we felt that was a little high, so we did lower that. Again, just an example of where we're trying to budget accurately and not overspend any more than we have to on things. Any other?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, hello, good evening, hi, my name's Tom Dad. I want to say thank you for having this type of forum. In the past, my job has limited me to attend this type of meeting, so this type of forum is greatly appreciated. The reason I'm here talking about to make is for a Jericho Center circle. Back in 2013, we've had, there was a study performed for traffic and safety, and I'm just asking about how line 165 for the road improvement and other road structures, how that 295 is allocated? And if the Jericho Center, there's been multiple plans, been approached to the Select Board, is Jericho Center in the Ultra Hill intersection, is that going to be addressed in this funds?
I think if it were to be addressed, that would be the line it would be addressed in. I don't know of current plans for this particular budget for that project.
Okay, so where is this 295 being allocated towards?
So that goes towards your repaving budgets. So every year, based on a pavement score, which Catherine is way more familiar with than I am, we try to target certain... than I am, we try to target certain roads to keep their pavement up to date. So that comes out of there. I apologize, Tom, I don't have a breakdown of exactly what we plan, like, every dollar of that 295, but if you look back, you can see it does jump around some, and then, you know, it's going to jump around based on a couple of factors, availability of pavers, cost of pavement, that type of thing. I, I don't have the, if you're looking for what projects are we going to tackle definitively now, I don't know that we're ever able to answer that in January. So it's a great question that I just, I don't think I've got a good answer for.
Okay, and just to wrap up, in, in, our town budget is reflected to our town plan. In our town plan, we have identified our stormwater mitigation. This Jericho Center was number four of six items, several of them have been completed, so it is a priority. It was looked into, a complete study was performed, and the project's been put on hold.
There still is a grant sitting out there for stormwater for the Jericho Center.
Right, and we have approached the town, we have a Bulger Hill Advisory Committee, Jericho Center Advisory Committee, that we have gone to the select board, we have given the new scope of work. And years later, I understand the pandemic, we've had the actual town engineer come out and fine-tune the plan, but we've yet to see the outcome. And the reason being is we had suggested a T-intersection at the end of Bulger Hill, because there is no stop sign, there's two ways to exit Bulger Hill, and we have vehicle traffic traveling at a fast speed down the hill onto the green, which is one of our recreation hotspots of the town. We've got three villages, and this is the one that's used mostly for recreation. So this type of project would marry in with the village sunders and the traffic safety, pedestrian safety. And number two, the other priority, which is listed number one on our town plan, is absorption and management of stormwater. So this one project would tackle both of those, and they could be tackled with those two types of grants, with the town paying a very small match. So I'd just like everyone here to consider that, if we can get that managed and moving along. Thank you for your time.
Other questions on highways and bridges? All right, Peter and Kira?
I believe we have a question from online, but I'm trying to see if they can unmute.
Okay.
Mark, are you able to unmute? So I also have Bernie wishing to make an amendment. I'm going to, this is a good time for that?
Yeah.
All right, Bernie, let me put you on. Go right ahead, you're, you're unmuted.
Thank you. My name is Bernie Pocat from Brown's Trace in Jericho. I'm representing the Jericho Center Preservation Association tonight. We are requesting a budget adjustment, adjustment for a dedicated line item. The JCPA has data from many traffic studies dated 1999, 2011, 12, 13, 19. Members of the public have issued letters of concern over at least the last four years, and studies and the resulting recommendations are not really effective without implementation. So we're, the existing measures help that we have in place today, and the data shows that there are more things that we can do to continually remind folks to drive more slowly and to disrupt speeding. So your support can help us implement further physical and perceptual measures. The motion is to amend the budget, is to insert a line item allocation within the budget dedicated to speeding countermeasures infrastructure, both physical and perceptual. Physical, physical, sorry. The amount being requested is $30,000 in physical year, physical year 2026, and for these funds to remain in place until utilized for the indicated purpose. And I'll offer three or four sentences of notes that may answer some questions ahead of time. The initial-
Excuse me, Bernie, this is David.
Yep.
I need to interrupt you because you've used your first minute.
Okay.
You may have another.
The initial focus is Jericho Center. The overall effort would follow the data that is addressed where in town the greatest amount of speeding is occurring. Knowing a dollar cap would save the JCPA members from doing fruitless work on more research and understanding the effectiveness and fit of a particular options that cost more than the available funding the town determines. If the funds are established, the JCPA would complete an analysis of the options within the dedicated allocated fund level, select the top one to three recommendations, seek public input, then present the top recommendations to the select board. Thank you.
Okay.
Can I say something about that?
Let me get it on the floor.
Okay. Because I have, that's right, I have the little motion, yeah.
Is there a second to the amendment to insert a line item dedicated to spending money on speed countermeasures in the amount of $30,000 on the, a line to be determined? Do we have a second? I'm sorry, I cannot accept anything but a second right now. And who's second, Tom?
Mary.
Okay, we have a question in the room, which I'm going to take first. Who's, can we get a microphone? It was over there somewhere.
Is that an increase to the budget or an allocation of the funds that are already in the budget?
The question for the amender is, is this a budget increase or reallocation from other funds?
I will make a observation and ask for if that's-
All right, can I interrupt? You need to just answer my question, because we're in the middle of a possible informal recasting of your amendment.
Is it an increase? Technically, yes. I'll say yes.
You want to increase the whole budget? So there you go, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to provide some additional information, that is, we, for the UPWP project with the RPC last year, and the data has just come in, there was a new speed study done of Jericho Center, and the data is in, and it, there's a lot of data points. It has not, not only the speed, but the weight of the vehicle, and what we're now awaiting is the full report from the Regional Planning Commission as to recommendations. So I don't know how that impacts what Bernie was asking for, but this, a brand-new speed study was done this past summer, and the data is now, the report, and we're waiting for the final report with recommendations of what the Regional Planning Commission would recommend.
You feel free to express an opinion about how-
I just thought I'd say the information.
You do get to say whether you think it's a good idea or not for the, for the amendment to pass. I mean, in terms of the way you guys have thought about this-
Dave is saying that maybe if you have a thought that this is silly, that it's already going to be done, don't worry about it, or no, no, this is going to affect a change in how we move forward around Jericho Center. That's what Dave's asking you, I think.
Well, we don't, we haven't had the report yet from the RPC. Sorry, we haven't got the final report from the RPC yet, so we can't say how it impacts. I know they're good, you know, the idea was, we were trying to see how to deal with speed in the center, and the new study has just been done, and they've added, you know, the weight of the vehicle to know whether it's one of the big trucks, or, you know, or whether it's somebody's little car that's speeding.
And I think to Catherine, the point she's making, it's hot off the presses. I, I haven't seen it. I only heard about it this week, so, yeah, it's really new, Bernie. I, I don't know that Catherine's wanting to say yes or no to your amendment, she just wanted you to have that information.
We have some questions here. Okay, who's up? I got a microphone on the left about in the middle. Wait a minute, Elizabeth, you'll be next.
Janet Nolan, I'd just like to know the timing on that report. I mean, could it be another six to nine months, or six weeks? Have they given you a timeframe of when to expect this?
Well, the data has already come in, and we need to understand it, so the RPC, one would imagine within the next month, report will be in.
We have a question online.
Elizabeth is next, just a minute, and then we'll go online.
If I understand, Elizabeth Bernstein, if I understand the-
The mic is low on.
I hate electronics. Thank you. Just if you don't know how to do something electronic-
Elizabeth, please, it's a-
If I understand the situation, Bernie is saying that the JCPA, the Jericho Center Preservation Association, is asking for $30,000, and they'll do the research. You're saying the research has already been done, but we don't know what they're recommending. Is that the situation?
Correct. That is the correct, the data, I mean, it is just hot off the presses, so we have not seen the final report.
In terms of how these things work, let's say the report that comes in recommends $50,000 worth of work, pulling a number out of a hat, or $20,000 worth of work, that, would that give guidance to the select board? And when would that work be done? Would it have to wait till after next town meeting, when monies were allocated, or could the monies be allocated and the improvements made, and then next year, we pay for it? What's the order?
If you work with the RPC, unfortunately, the deadline for this year's UPWP has already passed. UP is Unified Planning Work Program, and RPC is the Regional Planning Commission, and they do work for the municipalities in Chittenden County. And a lot of the UPWP projects are funded by federal transportation dollars, so you only have a 20% match. However, and so every town can give, you know, three, two, three, one, whatever they want in terms of projects that would be funded by transportation dollars. There are also land use planning grants available that would relate to transportation. They also do fee-for-service stuff. But the, so we get the report now, but unfortunately, we would not be able to apply for a grant to do work on recommendations until fiscal year, the next fiscal year, because it would be in January that the UPWP meets again to determine the money. So it all depends on what the report says and what you can do, that, you know, we might be able to do something this year, or where you could do next year, a bigger project for, for less money, because you only need a 20% match.
All right, let's move, go, Maria, did you have somebody online?
Yes, I believe we have a follow-up from Bernie, and then one other person.
Very good.
Go ahead, Bernie.
I just wanted to clarify that my motion was not for further research, it was have money aside so that once the select board accepts proposal either from JPC or from the Chittenden County, that there's money there to implement, that we don't have to wait another year to put something in place. So again, my, the, the motion is for putting money aside for implementation, not for studies or research.
All right, we have Martha, we have Martha unmuted. Can she please comment?
Martha Prince, I'm wondering, can we actually change that motion and cut that to a $15,000 and have it sit for the Jericho Center and reallocate if needed from a different fund, the other $15,000, or what it would cost?
All right. Yes, I will say that Robert Schulz-Worres make it, makes it possible. I think you might, yeah, it's possible. Let's all leave it at that.
Well, I would make a motion to put the money aside at $15,000 over to the Jericho Center for traffic control.
Okay, and is there a second to reduce the amount of the amendment we're discussing from $30,000 to $15,000? Is there a second to that amendment to the amendment? Hearing none, here.
David.
If, there was one on the back.
Darrell Mayhem.
Could you say your name again?
Darrell Mayhem.
Thank you. Okay, so we have an amendment to reduce to 15. I'd like to move through that part fairly quickly, but it wouldn't hurt to have a little bit of discussion on the reduction, which could be you, since you have your hand up. This has to be about the change in money.
I just have a certification question.
Microphone's not on, I believe, or it's not close enough to your mouth.
What? Hello? Oh, this is fun. I guess. Nancy Carlson, I, I just have a question for the select board. Is there any money in the budget for speed mitigation, any place in the town, right now?
I mean, there's a lot of places where that probably exists in the budget. I would say the biggest one is in the sheriff's, the sheriff. We have speed signs, I mean, we have a lot of things that we do maintaining those speed, the speed radar signs. We have some portable ones that we can move around town where we, where we have problem spots. So the quick answer to your question is, yes, there are things directly related to speed control that are throughout the budget.
Just a sec, I want to see if anybody online at the moment, Maria?
Yes, Martha, and yay, we actually have a few people, so we'll start with Martha.
Yes, I'd just like to reiterate, I feel that there are other places that, for other areas, that we have that speed control budget that, like you were just referring to, that there's money in the budget to potentially take care of speeding and safety issues, and we use it all the time. I'm not saying that I don't believe that we need an extra little bit up there for Jericho Center allocated specifically for that, but I certainly feel that we've got a high enough budget that we could reassign some of those from the road in the other place and just cut this to $15,000 instead of keeping on toppling on more money.
All right, thank you. I'm going to go into the room. Go ahead.
First of all-
Put a red post here.
Start with the name again, two, three, all right? Okay. First of all, I don't think Bernie's motion is for Jericho Center. It just happens to be a committee, the JCPA, that's introducing this concept. Second of all, if we've had four or five studies in the past, what has happened in the town to mitigate speeding? Now, mitigating speeding or traffic control shouldn't be up to hiring a sheriff. We should have put things in place to combat traffic, and if they were working 100%, we wouldn't need a sheriff. So we shouldn't be just concentrating on sheriffs and radar signs to do this. So I think that the $30,000 probably is a drop in the bucket for what we really should do. Thank you. Online, Maria?
Yes, Bernie, your turn.
I just would comment, what, people can decide whether it's relative or not, but the, there is a revenue that the town brings in for enforcement fines, and the 2024 number was about $50,000. I think it's line 15. Thank you.
Okay, back to the room. Anybody in the room?
My name's Jim Carroll.
Jim Carroll, I'm going to remind you, one minute, two.
I'd like, I'd like to ask all the other people in the room to seat their one minute here so I don't have to deal with this obstacle. Anyway, if you keep interrupting me, I'm never going to get there, David.
Overruled.
Okay. Thank you, David. I've been dodging cars for 47 years in Jericho Center and on most of the other roads. We have a serious problem with rural delivery by FedEx, UPS, and the garbage trucks. And they are rogue, they are not during heavy traffic hours, and they are dangerous. And we're talking about people's lives. And the value of the property on the road is directly related to the amount of noise and the hazard created by the vehicles directly in front of them. So if you think about, if you live there, you really want calmness. It's a matter of infrastructure. We've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars studying this issue. This $30,000 is seed money to demonstrate with local involvement by the people who are directly affected that we can implement and get things done before those of us who've lost our hair and now losing our teeth are no longer here. This is important.
That's your first minute.
Okay, thank you. We will compound the $30,000 because Catherine has said there's actually reserve money and there's grant money, and we can also have contributions. But if we don't have seeds, we will never have flowers in the garden. We want to get some flowers in the garden that says, in Jericho, we want people to drive safely, for vehicles to be quiet and calm, and for pedestrians to not have to use cars to feel safe as they move around their community. This is a lifestyle, life quality ask, to trust these citizens who have been running the Jericho Community Center and doing many things. And in the time I've been there, the Jersey barriers that are on the south end of the center, the island that's Barber Farm Road, these are all improvements, including the sidewalk, that have been facilitated by us asking and pushing and working hard. We need to do this because the speed and the carelessness in the distracted drivers are getting worse, and this adversely affects the life quality. And God forbid that we don't have a child or someone else, but it affects the pedestrians and the customers at the store.
Thank you, Jerry. That's all the time you've got.
Thank you, David.
Maria, back to you. People online.
No hands up.
Anybody in the room? We are considering an amendment to...
Oh, sorry, we just, we have a brand-new hand. Sorry, I can't, I take that back.
Bring it on, bring it on.
All right, Gaye, go ahead.
Sorry, I am confused.
What's your name again?
My name is Gaye Symington. I live in Jericho Center. And the people who are speaking are doing wonderful things for me. So I don't want to get in trouble with them. But I am confused. I'm about, one of the comments that was made, is this $30,000 or 15? Right now, we're talking about an amendment to change the 30 to 15.
Exactly. We're trying to decide whether to decrease to 15.
Right. Is this money to be spent on traffic calming for the whole town or just for Jericho Center? I'm uncomfortable. I guess that's my question.
The amendment, as I understand it, does not have any language about a specific location in town.
I realize that, but both, I'm trying to, in deciding whether I'm voting for the amendment, I'm trying to understand, are we talking about traffic calming for the whole town or just for Jericho Center? Are we putting a priority on Jericho Center based on the fact that noisy people who are empowered to stand up at town meeting are making amendments specifically for one part of town? Or are we, are we taking away a judgment call from the Select Board to decide where does the town most need traffic calming? And that's where we're going to spend the money? And that influences how much money I'm willing to spend on it?
I'm going to ask Bernie to speak up again, though he's used up his turns to just clarify that what his tangent was on the original amendment.
The JCPA has been focused on Jericho Center, but the work that they're doing is transferable to all of Jericho. The point would be to look at where the report comes in and tells us the worst speeding issues, where the worst cases are. But here's really the key to the answer.
No, I just, I just need the answer to the question. So you're saying in the town, Jerry?
Yes, the question is...
Thank you very much, Bernie. I got to move on. All right. So we are trying to reduce the, the amendment, the amendment is to reduce the amendment from 30 to 15. Is there any other? Can we move to a vote on the amendment? Nope, go ahead.
I'm May Tippert, I live in Jericho Center. And it seems to me that we don't have a traffic calming line item. And so often we've said, you know, can we get these spot lines, can we get these spot lines repainted? Can we get these speed signs repaired? And there's been no money. And so this is, I think, an effort to have something allocated that's specifically going to be used for traffic calming, no matter what other kinds of demands in town are facing.
Invite somebody to call a question. I've laid this open twice already. You can't call the question without being recognized. Just a minute. Oh, would you go ahead and speak then? Since I may be wrong, would you please go ahead and speak again?
I call the question on the $15,000 amendment to the amendment.
All right. Is there any objection to voting on the amount of money? Eric Dunn, you know this game I play, right? I just avoided a whole vote. And if there's no objection online or in the room, we will proceed to vote. And this, again, to be clear about the first phase of this, all we need to have for online is the online host's estimate of whether, which way the majority goes. We don't need to count online or in the room. Let's get the hands up and get an estimate of where the majority is. This is for the reduction of the original amendment from 30 to $15,000. All those in favor of the reduction from 30 to 15, please keep your hands up in the room and online until we have made our observations. I'm all set in the room. Thank you, people. A sense of the people online, Maria?
Not, not a majority.
Same here. Okay, the amendment to the amendment fails. The original amount of 30,000 stands. We are back talking about the original amendment. Is there further discussion about this much? We've done rather well on the discussion. I think we've really addressed it, but I welcome other comments. Are we all set? All right.
I guess I have one.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I forget if I have to recognize. $30,000 is almost exactly 1.1%. Just as you think through it. So if the budget right now, percentage and nothing else changed, was 19.3, it would go to 20.3.
Very good.
Increase.
We need a microphone in the aisle, in the middle.
I'm going to jump in real quick. Gallokey, who's coordinating the online and the audiovisual part of this, has asked that if folks who are speaking could come to the front of the room here to make it work better for the AV folks. Thank you.
I'm a supporter of more better. I'm a little uneasy with...
We don't know your name.
I'm Brian Stevens. I'm a little uneasy with designating $30,000 for one particular part of town when a lot of the other folks who aren't here tonight also experience the same sort of impact of high speeds in their own areas. For example, Raceway. I live on Raceway. There are other people who aren't here, who aren't speaking, live on Brown's Trace, and they live in other sections of the road, Lee River Road. Every area in this town is impacted by speeders. So I would like to give a fair assessment or allocation or ability for others to be able to at least share in this idea that we're helping to reduce the speed of the town. Now, I think the best people who are able to do that are led by your Select Board, as well as the people in the town garage, who can, working with the information from the RPC, understand what possible traffic calming opportunities are there. So again, this is not just something that's specific to Jericho Center. And I'm a little hesitant about moving money specifically for that area of town.
If I may interrupt. From online was that it is money intended to be of general use.
I suspect that what probably has been noted by Eric is that there are other areas within the budget, existing within the budget, that are available for traffic calming opportunities. Thanks.
Okay. Towards, on the left side, towards the back for a microphone, please. I guess it's great, if you don't mind coming up closer, that would be helpful.
Who knew I'd be way up here? My name is Patty Carroll. It's what are we going to do? And I know that that's why there was a study. But the concern is that within a month, we're going to be having our town meeting going through this. I don't want to wait another year. I don't think any of us want to wait another year. What are we going to do? There's so many options out there, and what options have been tried? That's the question. Maybe it's another question for another vote or whatever. But we've accepted the money budget now. But, and we've agreed that it's for all of Jericho, not just Jericho Center. So those are two things we've done. But what are we going to do? I don't think we need to be experts. I think we need to have common sense as to what's going to be done. Thank you.
I will say that you did elect a Select Board. It seems to be pretty good at this stuff. So it might be that they would know what to do with the $30,000.
Hanora Hurley? Sorry, that's my maiden name. Nora Grill. I motion that we table this amendment until we get the data from this report, so that we know what's happening in Jericho Center and maybe have a clearer picture of what's happening all through town. And since we have money that isn't specifically allocated, but in the budget, I trust this Select Board to understand the data and impart it to us as they find it and figure out how much we need in the budget. I think designating a specific amount of money might not be wise at the moment. And maybe for the 2026 budget, perhaps even at the next town meeting, we would have a clearer picture of what to do. So I motion to table.
Okay. I'm going to tell you a little bit more about Robert's Rules, people. There is no such thing as tabling. It's generally implied to two motions, either postpone to a time definite or postpone to a time indefinite. Ordinarily, tabling means postpone to a timing indefinite, which is the same as in most moderators' minds, killing it forever. So is your intent to...
Postpone, I would say definite, until we have...
So indefinitely?
More information.
Right. I would like to suggest that that is the same as voting no against this motion. It has the same impact, so that we could move on to the main motion. Do you have a comment? The microphone down front, please. Nate just answered.
Yes, okay, good, thank you. My name's Kathy Harris. I just wanted to say I didn't catch...
Microphone, Kathy, can you put the microphone right up to your mouth?
Okay, you bet. I didn't catch your name, but...
Hanora.
Hanora, I think if I understood you right, you weren't trying to kill the motion. You were saying, let's put it off action until we get the data, right?
Correct.
Okay. I think maybe it was misunderstood. This is postponing the time.
Yeah, but you see, until we get the data, it's indefinite. It's, you know, the intent is to kill the motion.
Presuming it's within the month.
Yeah. And the dilemma is, even if you say a time definite, that's a year from now, because we won't be in this room doing this as a group until a year from now. You could have an impact at a Select Board meeting, but in this forum, their next chance is a year from now. I submit that you should let the main motion make the decision.
This is Heidi Klein, and I would like to call the motion for a vote on this amendment.
Okay. Is there any objection to voting at this point? Any objection online to continue to vote, to proceed to voting?
Dave?
Yep.
Before you make, proceed to voting, could you please clarify if this is for Jericho Center or all of Jericho? And could you please take a yes vote and a no vote to help us out online to determine a majority?
So there's two parts. I'm losing it.
Sorry, it will just help us out. As not everyone is participating, so it'd be great.
All those in favor, please, your hands. Okay, I got it, I got it.
It looks like we have a comment.
I'm sorry, no, sorry, I've got to save the amendment. All right? If anybody has anything. And in my understanding, it is, there is an amendment to amend the budget by inserting a line item dedicated to increasing specie control measures across the town and in the amount of $30,000 for fiscal '26 to be rolled over to future years. Any objection from the original mover to the language I proposed? I think that's what you had. Hearing none, I'm going to move to the vote.
Let me just double-check with Bernie. Is that what you're asking?
Yes, yes, thank you, Dave.
Okay.
We're about to vote. There's no discussion left.
No, just wanted to make sure you had it first. Yep.
Okay. So, that's right. You're right, Maria, I just totally blew it. Okay, in the room and online, all those in favor, please raise your hands. Okay? And all those against, please raise your hands. And Maria, I'm, okay, here, thank you, people, just a minute. Maria, what's up?
I would say it was a draw, if I...
That's exactly what I say. Okay, we will take our first count, my good people. So now you have to put up your hands again, but this time you've got to have them up long enough for the countess to count. And so Maria, your people can use either the wave of...
Jen Thomas, if you can help me out.
Jen, Tom, if you can help me out, yep.
And Kathy and Beth are here. So all those in favor, please raise your hands. And let's go to count.
Keep holding your hands up, especially if you're on video.
This is in favor of the $30,000 increase. All right. Maria, we're ready to go to those, how about you?
Do we have a number, Tom?
Maria, I caught 17. What did you get?
I caught 18. We had two people on camera, one person on camera, two hands. So I've counted that as two.
Okay, I'll give it to you.
All right.
Can I get a general? Well, okay, so keep that number in mind. And now we'll go to the votes against. So hands now up against the motion. All hands up to vote against the motion.
Right, I see hands going up at the end, so let's make sure to hold them up there if you're going to do it.
Okay, now you can leave on the room. So are you good on account online?
Yes.
Okay, I've got a little Okay, anybody abstaining, hands up for abstain? We have, I can count these. Okay, and then if you could report about your yays, nays, and abstains now, that would be great.
Well, we had 18 yays, 16 nays, and we didn't take enough stings. Did you just lose the room?
This is crazy. Yeah. Are you ready for this? 54 in favor, 53 opposed. The motion appears to pass. We are done. Votes count around.
Okay, and I believe that wraps up highways and bridges. And I pass it on to Peter. Please give Peter, this is his first year, so I hope he gets a couple of these kind of thing. Okay, so we will proceed, I'm on page three, line 177, Summer Recreation Program. The very first line, 177, is actually not a spending item. That's a revenue item, so this is the Summer Rec Program, and that program collects $175,000 in fees. And then it gets spent in the ways that are shown there at bottom and then that are shown there down below. And then below line 187 is the net out, which is $22,089. That's what the program actually costs the taxpayers. So that's the big picture. $175,000 is in fees and 22, et cetera, or approximately a few thousand is from taxpayers. The biggest changes there are in salary and benefits. And that has been a matter of, they have more kids enrolled last year, and they're expecting more kids this year, and so they needed some more staff. And that's the increase in that portion of the budget. The rest of the budget is fairly level funded. So I'll leave it there unless there are questions. Is there a question in the back of the room? Oh, yeah, I'm up here, sorry. Little microphone?
Where'd you go?
Not ready.
Deblock, just wondering how many staff people there are in the Recreation Program?
I could not answer, I'm sorry, I couldn't answer that, I don't know. I mean, one head person and then a lot of like teenagers.
Well, there's a couple assistants deferred.
Yeah. So like a director, two semi-directors, and then a lot of teenagers getting summer spending.
In college.
Some 16 counselors.
Paul, Carrie, you're telling me there are 16 counselors, approximately?
Four assistants.
Three or four assistants, and then Lynn, who's the director? Other questions on Summer Rec? Okay, going to, insurance is fairly straightforward. Those are the costs that we were given by the insurance companies. And property and category went up. I don't believe that reflects on the town's actions, it's just the nature of insurance. Public health and safety is Essex Rescue, Richmond Rescue, and then Police Services. Police Services is up. And what we're getting for the Police Services that we pay, we're getting 50 hours a week of the sheriffs, the Chittenden County sheriffs, rather than the state police. We have had the state police in the past. But they have been, getting them here has meant overtime, which has made them significantly more expensive. So we've been going with the sheriffs instead for 50 hours a week. The VSP, the state police, still respond to act, to non, to events here in Jericho. So it's not that the state police don't come to Jericho at all, but they don't patrol Jericho for speeders on our dime, so to speak. And Essex and Richmond Rescue, those are the, that's the money that they requested to cover the town for ambulances and EMT work. Richmond, Essex in particular is really struggling right now to staff their ambulances. And so if anybody is interested in becoming EMT, they are sorely needed in the area. There are questions on public health and safety?
Yes, we have a comment. Bernie, go ahead.
I just would ask the Select Board to please consider each year adding notation next to Police Services, just what you said about how many hours per week the sheriff is scheduled. Just helpful to clarify that on the notation on line 193, thank you.
Did I get the name on that?
That was, I believe that was Bernie Pocat just asking that we that we let folks know that what that is paying for 50 hours a week. Okay, moving forward to building and property maintenance. There's not a lot of changes there. The biggest change is in the sidewalks, sidewalk maintenance. And that is essentially inflation. The person who does sidewalks has not, has not increased his rate in several years and decided that this year he wanted to increase rate a little bit. And so that's, that accounts for that change. And then other things, or the other pieces of that are fairly minor. And we're trying to keep the budget talk at sort of high level. But we're happy to discuss individual lines, obviously.
We have a hand here in front.
Sorry, Bernie.
Jericho Greens mowing, just to go off
Hold it, hold it, I'm sorry, I did not recognize you yet.
I'm sorry.
No, we have, the first person is here in the room.
Sorry. Hold on, Bernie.
I just had a comment
Name's, believe it or not.
Hanora Grill, I didn't come through. About possibly line 200 maintenance and repair to town facilities. The playground behind Underhill ID Pre School and Saxon Hill and Brown's River Middle School is a public playground. And it's in pretty bad disrepair. The two slides on it are both broken, and they're hazardous to small children.
I'm 99% sure that is all, that is Chittenden or Mount Mansfield Union School District property. So that's not anything that we would be dealing with at the school level.
That was my question, thank you.
Okay, online?
Okay, Bernie, go ahead.
Thank you, Bernie Pocat, Jericho Greens, Brown's Trace. The line item, I think, is now 199 Jericho Greens mowing. I just would ask the Select Board if it would be possible to reevaluate what areas need to be mowed and potentially reduce the mowing frequency to attempt to lower the bid for Jericho Greens mowing. It would also have a second benefit to the ecology. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bernie. Anything else under building and property maintenance?
Tom Bearable, Tree Wardens. We've had front-level discussions with the board about the ash tree maintenance management plan. And I was just wondering, because I walked into the meeting after you got through the highway part, how are we going to be allocating our expenses for ash tree removal if there's only $5,000 in the tree woods?
For this year, we talked about that. And for this year, we're going to move forward with the plan of the Highway Department, the Town Garage guys, doing that work in the summertime as they can. We're going to sort of delineate what areas to focus on and see how successful that is in getting tickets and headway on that.
I don't think, like, either get close or turn it on or both.
Jessica Dionne? I have a question about the sidewalk construction planning, which seems to be blank. And I know there are some sidewalk construction projects that are in various stages of existence in the town. I'm wondering if this is blank because that's being done with grant money or because they're not being done at all, or what?
I think that's, and Paul, you can jump in and correct me, but I believe that's sort of a legacy line item that hasn't, that's only on the budget line right now because it was budgeted in 2023 when we were putting money towards actually planning what we're going to do for sidewalks. But now, for example, Riverside sidewalks going in this year, and that's all budgeted, that's paid for through grants and through a matching amount from us that is not on this line.
If you see it on here, upcoming. If you have grants under an upcoming budget, you'll see it on here, then the sidewalk.
Is there any plan to move forward with the sidewalk between Griswold and Packard?
Yes. I mean, we, it is not in this budget. But yes, that's on our radar to try to create, I mean, I'm speaking for myself, to try to I would like to see us creating walkable space between the elementary school and Riverside, Mills Riverside Park area, and Packard to, Griswold to Packard is a piece of that.
Would be the first phase. But right now
It's not in the budget for right now. It takes several years to get grants lined up to be able to not have us paying for all out of pocket. And so it's a matter of getting grants lined up and then allocating the matching funds for that in future years.
And right now, there are three open sidewalk ramps in the town. Riverside goes to construction this year. MMU is in early phase, it's a mid-preliminary in engineering. And we're still working, having to redo some of the work for Beaver before it goes to construction. But it won't be going to construction probably in 2027.
Anything else under building and property?
All set online?
Okay, Jericho Conservation and Public Use is virtually unchanged. $800 total change. Other questions or comments on that section? Okay, the Town Center Library, the salaries are up a little bit on that. And that was because we increased the salary of the librarian in the town at the Jericho Center Library in an effort just to make that competitive and keep a good librarian working with us. Okay, now we move to appropriations, which are, the first few are mandated. Oh, is there a question? Yep.
Brian Calvin. I have a question about the Town Library. It seems like an extravagant expense to have two libraries within four months. And so I'd like to make the motion that we defund the Jericho Center and Town Library and decide whether that money goes to Deborah Ross and not.
Dave, that's you?
That's me.
Sound like a total book.
A motion has been made to defund the town, the Jericho Town Library. I didn't, did you want to clarify anything about the rest of what you said about, let's say, funding? What target that funding to be determined?
He said to then, he said, I believe he said potentially to allocate that to Deborah Ross.
Yeah, it should either be yes or no.
Two motions.
Just one motion, just to defund it.
All right. So the motion is to defund the Jericho Town Library. Is there a second to this motion? Is there a second online to the motion to defund the Jericho Town Library?
Any seconds online? I'm not seeing any.
The motion fails to be carried by a second. I am going to set it aside. Go ahead.
Oh, I have a hand up now. I don't know if this is before or after just happened.
Hi.
Bob?
Good, Frank.
Julie.
We're over.
So continue.
Defund.
I'm looking, he's working, working it here on, Dave?
Yes.
Okay. So under appropriations, we've got mandated, non-mandated. The mandated are the Chittenden County Tax, the Chittenden RPC, which is the Regional Planning Commission that Catherine already mentioned, that they're very helpful to us. And then the Jericho Underhill Park District, and the VLCT, Vermont League of Cities in Town, which I can tell you is a new Select Board member, is an incredible resource to all Select Boards. And so those are, those are dollar amounts, we don't have any say in it. They're mandated by the, by us, the fact of us being a town in Chittenden County. Under non-mandated, the biggest two pieces under non-mandated are line 222, which is the Chittenden Unit on Special Investigations, also known as CUSI. And that is a organization, a law enforcement organization that investigates and navigates sexual predators in the community. They're very, very important. Their budget is, I'll tell you that we, when we saw it going up by 100%, we were fairly shocked. And then Brian Stevens, who I think is still here, was very wise and pointed out that looking back several years, back farther, their budget, their request to us has been around $9,000 right through. And then last year, it dropped significantly. And they had also, I believe, had a turnover of leadership last year. And I am completely just thinking in my head, and I have no insight into this issue at all, that some kind of all, that some kind of mistake was made last year in their request. So while it is up significantly, it really was returning to what has been a pretty consistent number throughout the last many years. The other significant change is a decrease of $16,000 for Green Mountain Transit Service, which was the busing that ran from Burlington out to Jeffersonville and back in that bus because Green Mountain Transit has serious financial problems. That bus has been, that route has been canceled completely, so we no longer have bus service from Jeffersonville into Burlington. We have, the select board has talked about the potential of, at some point, maybe talking to other towns about buying a van and having to have a micro transit situation that we share with Jeffersonville, Cambridge, Underhill, Jericho, Essex. And we've reached out to other towns about that, but it hasn't been, we haven't kind of gotten any response yet from other towns, but, and with no response, we've decided to remove that from the budget. Although if we do get interest in that and that becomes a viable option, I think we'll be looking to move forward with that. Those are the big items under the non-mandated. Are there questions or comments about either the, either the appropriations sections?
Anybody else?
We have a comment online.
Go ahead.
This is Bernie Puckett in Brown Streets again. If I, may I ask a question about the ash tree removal that it wasn't clear to me?
Hey Bernie, can you lean in a little bit to whatever microphone you're speaking into, you're really hard to hear?
May I ask a question referring to line, I think it was about 204, about ash tree removal?
203, the Tree Warden? Sure, go ahead.
I, what I'm trying to understand is the, how many hours of labor did the Tree Warden assume he was, when he made the recommendation, what we do for removal? I assume he placed it in terms of dollars. I'm trying to figure out if the amount of, that we're expecting the town road crew to do, is that equivalent to what he recommended would be done when we were assuming it was going to be an outside hire? Is it the same amount of work, that same amount of trees that are going to be cut, so to speak?
Yeah, I recollection, and Eric and Catherine, you can correct me, my recollection is that there wasn't a set number of hours or dollar amount. It was just, we have a lot of trees that have been killed and are going to start falling and potentially hurting people, and we need to get working on this. And given the situation with the budget and for this year, which has very large increases, we felt that the way to both move forward with dealing with the dead ash trees without spending a whole lot of money was to see what we could get from the road crew over the summer and sort of see how that plays out and then make adjustments next year as needed. Is that what you guys remember?
Well, there was a potential, Sabino is going to look into potential grant funding.
But that didn't, that didn't play out.
So, so in net, we're not sure of how many hours will be allocated. It's a sort of, let's see how much we can squeeze in, is that?
Yes.
Because every tree has been identified.
Okay, we have, we have a person on the, in the room here in the auto room, go ahead.
Did you shake it?
Yeah.
I think I hear it now.
You hear it now? Okay, great, sorry. Maybe Brad, I have a couple of questions about non-mandated. And it was nice to have those binders back there that showed all the different applications. But I'm just curious, did you include in the budget all requests that came into the town or just some of them? Or, and how did you decide which ones to go in and which ones not to go in? That's a question, I have another question.
I just looked at people that I liked in groups I liked. I have a 100% kidding, 100,000% kidding. We generally went through and assessed each one and evaluated it and sort of asked, what is this for? What is Jericho getting for it? Is this how we want to spend our money? And yes, I think that in the end, I can't think of any of these non-mandated requests that we said a flat out no to. A couple we pushed back and said, how come? And explain a little more. And then got response that we go, okay, good, we feel good about that explanation, we're going to put it in the budget.
Go ahead, go to it, okay. We didn't touch anything. Should I just speak?
There you go.
Question about, well, a comment about Green Mountain Transit Service, and maybe this is an amendment. I would hate to see us kind of lose 16,000, well, actually, first part is a question. If we don't have the bus line in 2025, are we, we still have $16,000 going to Green Mountain?
No, we removed that from the budget. Right now, the budget for 2026 is $0 for Green Mountain Transit.
Right, but it's also appearing in 2025, it's up here.
Well, that was the budget, that was the budgeted amount. We don't have the actual yet. So the, so the bus.
We actually spent $2,000. So there will be some spending for 2025.
We actually only spent like $8,000 in FY25.
Paul, again, microphone.
It doesn't work, it's not on.
Oh.
We actually spent $8,000. So our outside agencies, we actually do three payments, installments, if they're over $3,000. And they were one of them last year that we paid $8,000 to, but, between $5,000 and $8,000, I can't remember the exact number, but, and then they came to a meeting and said that they were canceling it. So they are going to refund the town a portion of that money because they were canceling it. So we don't, we didn't pay them any more than just that one time.
Great. And so I guess my, maybe amendment might be, can, if we could maintain some funds for mass transit in this town. Because what I'm worried about is that we get rid of this, that went to Green Mountain, and then we kind of lose our momentum for mass transit, and it's harder to get back in future years.
So I'll comment on that because we had that exact same conversation in the board. Do we, do we throw some money at it in hopes to do something? Or do we try to do something and then add budget once we know what that thing is? You know, it's like what Peter said, a little bus. We did end up opting for just removing and not spending money on something that we don't actually have a home for, just mostly trying to be responsible with the budget. But we did talk through that. We had very similar thought process, right? If we, if we remove this, it's going to be harder to add, same kind of thing. We, we landed on removing it. That's my regulation of that conversation. A piece that, a thing, very quick sidebar, that I've learned beyond the select board is that I have always thought of the budget as sort of, as a taxpayer, I've always thought of the budget sort of aspirational, so sort of I think you're saying, which is like, let's put something in there to show that we still want to work on this. And being on this side of the table, I think of the budget more as, what's the very best prediction that we can give about what money we're going to spend this year? And right now, based on feedback from other towns, there's no energy to move forward with a sort of a micro transit idea. Oh, I'm going to say it, may not get in trouble with this. If something pops up, I'm going to make us find the money. If all of a sudden Jeffersonville and Cambridge say, hey, we like your idea, we want to figure this out, let's buy a Honda Odyssey and figure something out, I'm going to advocate hard for that to happen. So I'm not sure if that answers your question, but that, like Eric said, we kind of had the same question you did.
I guess a follow-up would be though, if we're not paying the full amount, like there is extra leftover that is supposed to be for mass transit, will that just go kind of into general going for whatever then? That doesn't really seem like, seem like in the will of the voters really.
Well, the will of the voters was for last year, the year we're living in, and any money that isn't spent, I mean, well, there's money, there's other money that got spent somewhere else we didn't budget for hypothetically. And so it all kind of washes out at the end of the year, and your checkbook is negative and you have problems to sort out, or it's positive and that offsets budget for future years. That sort of happens across different line items anyways. I hear what you're, I hear what you're saying now.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I just feel like there are people in our community that need mass transit, and there should be creative ways for us to reallocate those dollars that were supposed to be for mass transit for mass transit. So I'll, I'll leave it there and just hope, and I know you all are working in the best interest there, but I just would really like to see that sometimes.
What you need to do is talk to your legislatures. Because the, there are some really important roads in the, the inner core, particularly in Winuski and stuff that are being also eliminated, which really impacts the disadvantaged as well.
Or, or get a group together here in town and say, hey, there's 10 of us here who want to make this happen.
Absolutely. I mean, right now, they're advocating for people to go to the legislature and advocate for Green Mountain Transit to get more funding across the board.
Okay, I just looked at my watch.
That's right.
You got 20 minutes. Are there other questions on the appropriations?
Yes. Yes, 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 I'll turn it right away. Matthew Champlin, could you explain what line 233 is for?
233 is the MMUSD Tennis Court Fund, and that is money that the tennis court organization has requested for resurfacing and maintaining the courts at JES, I believe.
Isn't that property MMU property and similar at Brown River Middle School? That's the responsibility of the school. So I'd make a motion to remove $1,000 from the budget.
Is there?
We have a question from our line two.
No, I haven't, it's not, I haven't gotten to the floor. Because I understand we have a motion to, what line was that, I'm sorry?
233, MMUSD Tennis Court Fund for $1,000.
So we have a motion to remove $1,000 entirely from 233. Is there a second to that?
Are you second?
Nope. Absolutely not.
No, okay, just making sure.
Yep.
I think I have one in the room, is it somebody? Yes?
Brian Calvin, second.
Brian Calvin, seconded. Okay, so just, so the rationale again is that it's MMU land.
Same as, same as Brown River's lines and playground.
Discussion of removing $1,000 for tennis court improvement.
Hello, Sarah Jane Dubey. Question, was this the $1,000 that was given to the school to open the ice rink for the town that utilizes notes, a separate thing? Okay, thank you.
We have a comment online?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Hi, Edie Granting. So the history on the $1,000 is that the courts are public courts that happen to be on school property. The school pays for the bulk, and by the bulk, I mean 90% of the cost. And this is the town, has the town agreed years ago, when there was a big committee, and somebody in the room may know more information than I do, that paid to resurface it, the town paid, agreed at that moment to pay $1,000 a year, as long as the courts were kept up to have a portion of that so that the courts could stay public. So this is a, I could bring people in to give you more information. I'm sure there's some kind of a white paper on this, but this is a longstanding thing, and it's a tiny amount of money.
So you're speaking against the motion, right?
Yes. But I'm also, I'm actually just providing history, so.
Okay. Any, any other discussion on line 233, removing $1,000? You ready to vote? All hands online and in the room, ready to vote?
Yeah, if you can just slow this process down just a little bit, Dave, so that people have time to react online, that'd be great.
This is my first time, just tell me what to do. Okay, so. Again, we're going to start with a sense of the room not counting. So all of those in favor of removing the $1,000, please raise your hands in the room or online.
Please raise your hands and hold them up if you're in favor.
I'm all set in the room, Maria. Let me know when you're all set online.
All set here.
Okay, we're moving to opposed. All those opposed to the removal of the $1,000, please raise your hands. I have a sense of the room, Maria. Let me know when you're all set.
I have a very good sense of the room this time, yes, thank you.
Okay, overwhelmingly in favor of rejecting the removal of the $1,000.
Correct.
Back to me, Dave?
Yeah.
Okay, so any other questions on appropriations mandated and non-mandated? Okay, and, because am I up here or you?
Me.
All right, or Catherine?
Yeah.
Actually, get a little bit closer again.
So what we have now is what we call our net cash outlays. This is what we've done the last couple of years to try to make it clear between the revenues and the expenses of various expensive activity. The first one is the, some, these are numbers that you will have seen in the capital budget as well as reflected in the regular budget. But purchase costs of the heavy equipment that was mentioned in capital budget was 256,614, and we're going to use loan to pay for those things in the upcoming year. The next big one is Bridge 15, Vtrans replacement grant income. They're going to provide $2,265,000, $275,000 for the project is what it's going to cost. The grant is $2,384,500, and this reflects our match of $119,225 for Bridge 15. The old pump bridge, we're anticipating, is going to cost about $150,000 to bring it back so we can pay the aprons and things like that, as well as the bridge. And we're anticipating $120,000 for Structures Grant, which.
What, what line are we on, Karen?
We're online, the Bridge 15 was 257 and 258.
You got a question from the room? James asked. Catherine, where is that bridge on Route 15?
That's down below the, you know, the dip on, it's Bridge 15, and that's on Brown Streets where you have the dip. Yeah, Bridge 15, not Route 15.
Do I just have where I work on?
Yeah, because we had to, had to actually sister the joints together because they were separating, and we had to keep it going until we could get Vtrans to continue to come do a complete bridge replacement. So we're anticipating a Structures Grant for $120,000 for the old pump bridge, which means our 20% match is the $30,000 for that one. This is new this year is the, I'm trying to read at the same time, I'm looking at this, sorry about that. The wastewater feasibility, we're, it's called grant income and expense, but it's just, right now, the anticipation is, what we're doing is going to take $100,000 to move wastewater forward and using $100,000 of unrestricted fund balance to do that. And then the Riverside sidewalk grant income, the branch, the bridge is going to, yeah, bridge, sidewalk, is going to cost about $750,000. The grant is for $600,000. Our 20% match is $150,000 going forward. And then we have the MMU Brown Streets path to continue to, you know, we've got it down to the Lee River, now we have to get it across the Lee River and up to the school. And this is just early preliminary work being done, so there's 50,000 expected expenses, and we're going to have $40,000 in, in grant income, so we're going to be paying for the 20% match, which is $10,000. Any questions before I move on to the debt service?
Do you have a question online?
Just a minute, yeah, we got one here too. Why don't you go ahead online?
Go ahead, Martha.
Hi, I'm Martha Prince again. Can you tell me, you're saying $100,000 to put into a fund for the wastewater feasibility? Is that the one up by Villanous up in Underhill? Is that the one up by Villanous up in Underhill?
This is not for a fund, this is actually to move the project forward and start discussing with the Boyd and King the potential preliminary engineering for wastewater facility itself, as well as the, all the need for a wastewater committee, wastewater governance, working with the RPC for project management, manager, all kinds of things that need to be done before you even begin to actually construct a wastewater facility from Riverside.
Okay, so a question on that. Is that, I suspect that that's a $20 million project. Is there any, does the town of Jericho, are we in a situation where we're going to have to fund that full value or cost of that wastewater system? Or do we get, or are we in a position where we can get any grants or funds? Or is it all going to be taxpayers, townwide taxpayers paying for that facility up there when very few people in town actually have the access to use it?
Well, that's another thing this committee's got to look at, is what are funding sources available to the town of Jericho before anything happens? So they have, we need to isolate as many ways of funding it as possible.
And there are several. We had somebody come to a select board meeting and went through lots and lots of different options that all need to be explored by this person in this committee, like, I think, 15 different sources.
Some will work, obviously, and some will not be available to us.
So in other words, it's kind of like Jim said about this stuff, you need to plant, you have to have seed money, and then once the flowers start growing, there's no way for anybody to stop it.
That's an interesting take on it. Aye. Well, actually, actually, what this year will do is it will, the other thing that needs to be done is a study to see how many people would actually take the wastewater beyond the initial area where we know that there is growth potential. And that will certainly help decide how far and how much of a wastewater facility to design for the area, so that the taxpayers do not have to pay for more than what we, you know, people would expect to pay for. Once, once it, the idea is that if we construct wastewater in a particular area where there is growth designation, that it will help make housing more affordable. And then once it is constructed, the people who are using it are the ones who are going to have to be paying for it. And there are various ways of doing that, either you may, throughout the state. Sometimes people are made to hook up to it so that it is, you know, function, so there's enough people to take it. Otherwise, you're right, there are very few people end up paying for a very large amount of money.
Just, I wanted to cut in quickly, just to be clear. I, at least, am not going to support asking the taxpayer for $20 million to fund the entire wastewater project.
Absolutely not.
You never ever said that explicitly, there are lots of sources, but just to be really clear, there is no discussion of paying $20 million from Jericho taxpayers' pockets.
Okay. Because if there is, I think Lee River Road ought to come and connect to them.
I want to point out to the select board that we have eight minutes to the end of our warrant time.
Okay, because I know the meeting was supposed to last till nine.
Eight thirty.
It does say nine in the morning.
You made a...
No, my...
Okay, move on, move on, move on.
All right, any more questions on, let's see?
Sabina has a question.
Sabina, all right, I just had a question regarding Bridge 15, and when and where public design meetings will be held?
Design meetings already, I think, have, I think they're going to construction now. This is...
Other than construction.
So there's no further opportunity to comment on bicycle industry improvements?
They took all the, all the input from the planning commission and the stuff the select board gave them into account, and actually, the bridge is going to be wider than Brown's Trace itself, so.
Is there a way to view the plans that were provided?
I think so, no? I mean, there's a folder with all that stuff, isn't it?
Yep. Okay.
And, you know, the aprons are expanded, so it makes it easier, you know, for bikes to get on and off. So actually, they'll be safer on the bridge with the aprons than actually what's available to them on Brown's Trace.
You have a comment online?
Go ahead.
This is Bernie from Brown's Trace. On what line can I view the total 2024 town outstanding debt amount?
I don't think it's that simple, Bernie. I don't, I don't think you're going to find a, what I think I heard Bernie say is, what line shows the total amount of debt that the town has? I don't think we have it broken down in a convenient form like that.
No, I was ready to start debt service next anyway. So debt service is line 274. The interest on the debt for fiscal year 2026 is going to be $31,259. And this is where you'll see the maintenance facility assessment. That's our first payment for the new garage, and that's $303,195. And the principal payments, this will be $207,630. But this also includes the last few payment, we, down to our last, I think, three years of payments for the town hall, which was a 30-year grant, 30-year bond vote as well. So that's included in the principal payments as well as the interest. So our total debt service for fiscal year 2026 is $542,067. And then we're going to transfer from reserve funds to help pay for some of the sidewalks, some of the road projects, using $50,000 of road impact fees, $30,000 from the heavy equipment fund for help offset the cost of the equipment. You're going to see the reappraisal, we've got the bridge replacement fund using $119,225 for a total reserve fund usage of $299,225. The reappraisal fund is going to get another $25,000. This is money that comes from the state every year to go specifically into the reappraisal fund. And the sidewalks, let's see, sidewalks were going to put $60,000, appears to be, in the budget for fiscal year 2026.
Thank you, Catherine. I appreciate all the detail, but I guess I'll just ask for, in future, if we could consider just a one-line item that says, you know, I know all the details in there and gathered throughout the forums, but just a one number. It's sort of like looking at our checkbook to saying, where are we year to year on outstanding debt? Is it a way to make a one number? You know, you've answered my question for details for this time, it's just a comment to say it'd be nice to see that one line on item number.
I, you know, so I just briefly to say that the town, the warning does say till nine o'clock, and it's quite a bit of our publicity, it said eight thirty. If, if the citizens are interested in attending, we will, we'll keep...
However, I only have one little plus thing to say, and then the budget is done.
Well, I would also have the opportunity to offer other rhythms, which I believe was on your board.
That's right.
Yeah, so we'll continue till nine if you're in the mood. If you thought you were going to be here till eight thirty, we'll understand if you have to leave.
So anyway, we're going to transfer only $85,000 to reserve funds, so our net reserve, net reserve fund activities are going to be withdrawing $214,225 for a total expenditure of $4,51,911. And that's the end of the budget.
Well, thank you so much. Any general closing remarks or anything you want to do before I move on? Anything from the public?
If they have, I'll give you a question as we can more...
We have, we have a comment in the room. What's going on online, Maria?
Looks like we have Bernie back.
Sorry, one last question. Same, Catherine, the same kind of question. Is there a place on here, if not now, but in the future, where we could look and see what the current total reserve fund balance is? Again, without getting all the detail, just a one number.
What was the question?
If there's a way to see the total reserve balance that the town holds.
That can be posted. We, the thing with reserve funds, they're all very specific. It only can be used for that reserve item. So you can't just shift money from one to another with, but, I would, I appreciate it. But I could...
I don't, I don't think we have that number right here right now, but I bet we could pull together.
Squeak, but there is still...
Oh, asking the future, the future for what's our total debt and what's our total reserve funds? Where the checkbook's standing.
Okay.
Friends?
We have a comment in the room?
Yeah.
James asks.
Question on the select board in relation to the $30,000 vote for the traffic control studies. It wasn't, this is kind of a new format for us all, and it's sort of a, it was kind of a, you know, a loose back and forth, sort of. We've got a, the one vote in favor, I think, on 5453. That's not a strong mandate. So is that one vote compelling mandate for you to put that into the budget? Or are you going to discuss it?
So what I heard from the voters last year and throughout the year when we've been talking about TMRI, so that first vote to move all the votes to Australian ballot, and the second vote or as an amendment or something, to try to preserve whatever we would, is to try to treat this meeting just like if we would have if it was town meeting. And so that means if today was town meeting and that passed by one vote, it would, if the whole budget goes for a vote, which I assume happens next, and that budget gets voted up or down, and if it's yes, then that's what we're going to, that's what we're going to pass on, even though it is one vote.
I'd just point out that majority rule is a basic principle.
With a small amount of participation, though, I think we could have some problems in the future with this idea.
Maria, another comment in the room. Let me know if you have people online.
Anyone wish to comment?
Just a comment.
Go ahead.
So Catherine said that...
Name again.
Peter Anderson. The budget was $4,51,911, but if my addition is correct, given the amendments that we made tonight, that it's actually $4,91,511.
Boom, right on the money. That's what I have to, that's what I have to here. What did he ask? Sorry, what, what was that?
Excellent, thank you.
That's the budget that...
I always wait for names to say.
That's the budget that exists right now. That's adding $30,000, that's the original budget, it's the budget we presented here, plus $30,000 for...
You're missing the 94, 100 for the select board.
Nope, I have, I had, I added $30,000 for the safety study and 9600 for the select board. And I got $4,91,511. What? I have 3.6 million.
I, you know, can we work the math out in some of the...
Because they have to make a vote on this.
Well, no, they're not, you could probably point out that the citizens are not voting on that number tonight.
That's true.
They're voting on it on the first Tuesday of March on Australian ballot.
Yeah, 0051911, that's total expenditure.
You actually, are we good with that number then?
Yes. That is?
Yes.
Anything else, people? Yep?
May, Brad again. I just have a procedural question about resolutions. I don't think there's, was there an agenda for this meeting, or?
Yeah, we've seen...
Yes, there's another, there's another business section as to the budget stuff.
So other, during other business, we, someone could have proposed a town meeting, a town meeting resolution from the floor.
If there's no money involved.
Okay, great, thank you.
Howard Johnson, could we have a discussion of other collections on page eight?
Oh, yes, I rushed to that, I'm too, too, yeah. So that, you know, we were trying to get the budget done. Other collections and remittances are things that you can, you see on your tax bill. The Underhill Jericho Fire Department, $573,151. This, this will all be, they will be the official information meeting that's required for Australian ballot. The Debra Rosson Library is already voted, and the budget for there is $221,020. And the Old Red Mill is a burden on reserve fund in recent years, and we expect $19,155 to go into that fund. The Conservation Fund is also another voted on village, and that's $35,476. For a total collection of $848,200. However, these are essentially pass-throughs that have already been voted on. And so, yes, you'll see them on your tax bill, but as I said at the very beginning, this is not included in what we're asking for tax revenue for the operating budget of the town. There's some general taxes and some dealable change too, based on what we just asked for with the additions. Rather than 395,977, that will be shifted upward to reflect the money that is added to the budget tonight.
If there's no further comment and no objection, I'd like to move on to other business. Before we do that, I want to quickly, so Erica and I had a quick backside conference real quick about sort of what the, what the move was to the board. Because right now, this is technically just a select board meeting that happens to be happening here very publicly. But in terms of what can legally be done, only the three of us can take action. And so I'm going to now make a motion to accept the changes requested by the citizens present and adjust the budget as amended to approximately $4,91,511. And the reason it's approximate is because Joe Flynn's request to increase our pay to $5,000, we don't know exactly what the differential is, so it'll be a couple dollars off from that, but we can work that out tomorrow in the office.
And I just to make sure that people in the room understand, there's only three people that can vote.
Correct. This is, this is now the select board imposing the will of the people, or accepting the will of the people. I second that motion.
Oh, does the figure say aye?
Aye. So that is now the budget that will be on the Australian ballot on Town Meeting Day on the first Tuesday of March.
And your town meeting, rementioned through, and you're...
In case you don't believe, which often happens at town meeting after the budget's passed, I personally, I think all of us, I speak for all, I know I speak for all of us, thank you so, so much for coming out. This was a great crowd. I think with the people here and online, it was bigger than a regular town meeting day. And I really appreciate everyone working through the growing pains of this. And as Sam on the TMRI committee said, this is the worst it will ever be. It'll always be better than this because we're learning as we go. So next year will be even better. Thank you so much. Now other business, Dave.
And may I just say, it'll be better because you're going to spread the word that this worked.
That's right.
All right.
Yeah, bring your friends next time.
All right, other business that wants to come to the town on the part of the voters? It's your chance to bring anything up.
We have a comment from Gay.
Go ahead, Gay.
Yeah, this is Gay Signington. In order for that to be true, the task force will meet again, and we would love to get feedback from people about your experience, especially for folks, well, whether you're in the room or if you're online. I learned a lot by participating online, and I'm sure others learned as well. So please speak up to the select board or the task force members for any kind of feedback, because we do want to keep making, you know, moving this forward and making it better. Thank you.
In the room? Being like your phone in the aisle.
I just have a question, Keiko Williams. What happens to all the articles that we normally were able to amend at town meeting?
The nature of those articles, well, some of them will appear on the Australian ballot, and some of them, the reason, there are some, there are no articles coming from the select board this year. But it might be, well, what do you do with articles relating to the routine town business, the so-called boilerplate?
That'll all be on the Australian ballot.
Yeah.
Fact is, after we're finished with all this, we have to approve the official town warning for the town of Jericho, which includes, shall the town collect its taxes by its pressure in accordance with 32 VSA Section 4791? Shall the town collect its taxes?
No, sorry, all, sorry, all. All the, all the standard articles that we normally vote on very quickly here at town meeting will all be on the Australian ballot on Town Meeting Day.
Yeah, too much information.
Anything else on other business? Where are we?
We have a couple people online if you need.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, go ahead.
Edie Grannan. I just wanted to say I got distracted earlier. I was gonna comment that the representatives of Jericho and Underhill, so Trevor and I are very concerned about the transit situation, and we understand that it's a problem and are working to, working on behalf of the citizens of Jericho and Underhill to get that back. I don't know how successful we will be, but heard, so reach out to the Transportation Committee in the House and the Senate. We are working already, Trevor and I are, so just wanted to say that, and really appreciate everybody being here today. This is an excellent way to do town meeting for everybody. I appreciate just being a part of it, so thank you.
We have one more comment, if you have, no one in the room?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, go ahead. David?
Hi, this is David Jones. I just want to say, as someone last year who at town meeting spoke in favor of this format, not because it's easier for me, because it's actually harder for me. I missed part of the meeting because I get home from work quite late, and I would much prefer the old town meeting for my own sake, but I was kind of willing to support the concept of a different setting to make sure that more people had the potential to come. And then when I spoke last year and said, I really want to have a meeting like the one you had tonight, where we kind of make these changes to the budget, because I think that is really important, that kind of citizens making changes, and then maybe move it to Australian ballot later as a way to kind of bridge the gap, I just want to say to the select board and to the committee that worked on this, thank you so much, because this, this is what I envisioned as that sort of compromise. And again, while I personally missed the first, you know, hour of the meeting probably, I appreciate that other people could be online and be there as well in person, and just say thank you so much for the hard work everyone put into this.
You're welcome.
They work hard, the committee.
Well, if there's no further, is there further? Right here in front, go ahead.
Tom Merble.
Yep.
Could you add to me on future versions of this meeting as to the requirements for petitions? I know the select board enlargement petition didn't meet a deadline this time around, but for petitions in general, what is the quota required for registered voters and what's going to be the deadline in next iteration?
Okay, I'm gonna answer the first part of that, and Peter's gonna answer the second. So going forward, we're gonna have this idea that there are two kinds of public questions, some of them originating with the select board, and they will reach this room for this meeting annually, for and be liable for amendments. The other kind are originating with the public, and there will be a deadline for them and a certain quota, and those will not reach this room because they will be going directly to the ballot. And as to deadlines and quotas, I will, that is a terrain I know nothing about, which is why I thought you might at least give us a sense of the situation here.
Sure, I know that there are three different levels. There's three different types of petitions that get pulled together. One requires 5% of the tech, of the citizens, one requires 10%, and a single one requires 15%. And the 15% one is the, any increase or decrease in the select board size, the only way to change the size of the select board, no matter who wants to do it, no matter how much a select board does or doesn't want it to happen, the only way to do it is with a petition of 15% of the voters. And there is no deadline whatsoever. If six, I've been told the number is 650. If 656 are gathered by March 11th, they can then be presented to the select board, and the select board has, I think it's 45 days to act on that petition. So the people who have signed, you didn't sign a petition that didn't make it, you signed a petition that is still out there and has not been presented to the select board yet, and those signatures are all live until they're handed to the select board. So there is no deadline, and it's a matter of people who are organizing it, getting those signatures, and then if they get enough, turning them to the select board.
And regular petitions for almost all things that come from the public is a 5% requirement. And the deadline is set by whenever the town meeting is, because there's a specific time set by the state of when those petitions are due. They're usually due a couple weeks before the nominating petitions are due. The 10% was set by the select board years ago because people wanted to have things that aren't quite town business, which would be your first 5%, so that we said if people could get 10% of the voters to sign a petition, then things like, oh, what's the town tree? Or, you know, that could be 5% too. But, or I want to join the Paris Court, you know, those things would require 10% because it's not necessarily town business, but it may impact the community enough that people want to vote on it.
And on the select board thing, Peter covered it really well, I do want to point out that other towns can just decide to go to three or five. It's, the reason Jericho can't is because of the way that it's written in our charter. It's directly written that way in their charter. So if you hear like, oh, Underhill just decided to go, they can do that.
Because they didn't put it in the charter.
They don't have it in it, or I don't even know if they have a charter. They don't have it in there.
I think, you know, I noticed they have a charter, you know, they didn't have.
Dave? Where are we?
I have a question from online.
Yep, I've got one here too.
They actually got two.
Will people be able to, will ballots be mailed this year, or will they need to request absentee ballots?
I'm 95% sure that you need to request absentee ballots for Town Meeting Day. Yes, you need, I'm 100% sure you need to request absentee ballots. They will not be mailed out automatically.
Okay, we have a couple folks in the room.
Sarah J. Dewey. I just wanted to address your question, Tom, and I think it kind of points to what you, I just blanked on your name, but what you asked earlier as well. From the task force, we wanted to be able to have those kind of petitions, those public questions, happen at the floor so that we could amend these things like we're used to doing at town meeting. Because the select board needed enough time to build their budget, we had to schedule this meeting after the deadline for getting those public questions, petitions filed. And so we can't amend something that's already been submitted to be voted on. So the timeline in order, in order to make sure that the budget had enough time, that the select board, I apologize, had enough time to get the budget together for this meeting, and, and it was a squeeze, and I really thank them for doing that so that we could have this opportunity to amend and come together as a community to discuss, meant that this meeting had to happen after now. And so I think in the future, one of the things the task force really needs to consider, and would love your feedback on, is the first meeting that we had, that we called the visioning meeting or the kickoff meeting, where we told the select board what our priorities were and what we wanted them to take into consideration as they then ventured out into building the budget. And that meeting would be a really great time for folks to bring their petitions and their potential public questions to the community, to have the kind of back and forth that I think you both are asking for. We tried.
Okay. Elizabeth?
Just to clarify, so that means that you, you sir mentioned March 11th, but that has no effect on.
I meant a random date, any date is all, whenever the petitions are all, whenever there's enough signatures on petition and it's handed to the select board, the select board needs to have.
No, it goes to the town clerk.
To the town clerk, who then verifies all the signatures, then the select board has 45 days to schedule a vote. There's no due date.
My question is, do we have to wait until next town meeting?
No.
No, there's no.
It would be a special election.
Anytime that they turn.
Oh, but that costs extra money?
Yes.
Okay, so if we want to have a special election, we should push for the signatures now, or we should probably push for the signatures now, and they can just lie there until whenever we decide, whenever the select board decides to have it voted on, right?
Nope, you, you want to gather them, and then once there are enough, they, at that, once you have enough, those will be handed to the town clerk, who will verify all the signatures are actually real people, are all in Jericho, there are actual signatures, and then will say to the select board, hey, select board, you have X number of days to schedule a special vote.
Thank you.
So you could time it, you could time it, the submission of 600 signatures to go on the November ballot, for instance?
Yes, it was.
Sure.
Yeah, you could do that. There was a discussion last year.
Maybe if you want to save some money.
How much money does Edie, an election cost?
I think Jessica schedules for something like this would be around $5,000, something like that. But don't quote me.
Okay, we'll get, why don't we go online first? You have another question there?
All quiet here.
All right, in the room? Here or gone? In either board? Any objection to adjourning the town meeting, read it imagined?
Good work.
Okay.
And one last thank you, there's four women, Maria Rinaldi online, Paula Carrier, Sabina Erst, and Jen Nowher, who have all been banging keyboards for the last three hours to make this all possible. Thank you very much to those who voted. Thanks, Mary. Oh, Anna Gallokey, Anna Gallokey, who saved the day first.
Can't forget Anna Gallokey, that's right, because she did save the day. Otherwise, we wouldn't have been able to hear online.